Okay, it is nine thirty. I am calling to order the special meeting of the Board of Directors on Communications. I'm gaveling. The first order of business is to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any public expression on this item? Actually, I don't. Okay. The second item on our agenda is public expression. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak on an item that is not agendized, this is the time to do so. I'm not seeing our public wishing to speak. We're now moving on to the calendar. The first item on the calendar is the minutes of the May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, meeting. Is there any public expression on this item or any board comment on this item?
No, I'd move approval.
Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted. Moving on to the second item, we're going to hear from Jeannie on the website development update.
Great. Good morning, Board members. So, we're so excited to report that things have been going really well with our website developer. Since we last met, I think, I believe, I mentioned that we issued our request for proposals in October. And in November, we selected a vendor to do our website development, and that vendor is MIG Inc. They have extensive experience. They've been in business since two thousand and one and literally have done hundreds of websites. And websites for, you know, agencies like ours, public agency websites. So, we're really excited to have them onboard. We're right now on track to meet our timeline. So, we begin next week with design development and getting ready to prepare for the next phase of content migration. I just wanted to take a little bit of time to explain that there are going to be some really impressive improvements with the new site. One of the most obvious, I think, to our customers will be an improved interface for when you pay your bill. It'll be much smoother, much easier, and it'll feel like you're still part of our website because right now, it almost looks like you're being redirected to a different site. So, we're happy with that. Our website will also maximize optimization or rendering on tablets and mobile devices. So, what that means is you'll be able to see it clearly, you know, click through it, and it'll be so much easier to navigate. And that, I think, will be a really good improvement. Of course, the website will be fully compliant with all ADA requirements, including the Website Content Accessibility Guidelines. So, a lot of effort was spent making sure that we meet, if not exceed, those guidelines. And finally, the library will be revamped in a way that people can find things with fewer clicks. And I think that's one of the criticisms about not being transparent. It's not that the data or information is not there, it's just difficult to find. So, I really think that these improvements will go a long way, and we're really excited to begin. Happy to answer any questions about the process or where we are.
Can you give us a sense? So, you're starting now, but can you give us a sense of just an overview of the timeline, Jeannie, when the new site you expected to be up and running? And I understand that's not set in stone, but I think it would be useful for us to have a sense of your current thinking about timing.
Sure. So, actually, the first meeting will begin next week, and we're doing what is called a discovery. And what's involved in that is looking at the existing site, looking at the content, and really developing a site architecture for what we want users to experience. And that's a really important part or important phase. We think we'll be done with that in approximately two to three weeks.
Oh, okay.
It's an aggressive timeline.
That's fast.
But the benefit of having a company like MIG, I think, is that they've got excellent staff, they've done this before, they're raring to go, they have already reached out and communicated some of the information they need, and that will be helpful for us. And then, the next important phase is really the content migration. And that literally is taking the content we have in our website, and there has to be a lot of cleaning up of that content first. And then scooping it up, if you will, and just migrating it to the new site so that it falls into exactly the places it needs to go. That's a process that'll probably take about four to six weeks, including the testing period. So, you want to test more than once during a content migration. And I have high confidence that it'll go smoothly because we've been spending time trying to get things in order for that. And then finally, we'll do a beta launch, a beta test, and let people play with the site to see, hey, is there anything we may have overlooked? Because everybody uses a website differently, and we want to make sure that the functionality is spot on. So, the way you do that is you have different people try to accomplish different tasks on the website, and then we make any changes, and then we go into launch. Right now, we're looking at launch April or May, depending on how well the content migration goes. I think May is a pretty aggressive timeline, but it is realistic. It is realistic. So, we're looking at a May launch.
That's great. Will you be coming back to the Board with any sort of pre-design so we can have a bit of input and the public can have a bit of input into sort of look, feel, you know, that kind of thing while the design is in development?
Right. So, as we move through the process, we definitely will be coming back with updates. So, you'll be able to see the progress, see how things are going. And we really want, as I mentioned, people to test it out internally, though. We're not going to launch it externally. But some internal folks here, including the Board, to just run through it and test it. And that really is going to position us for success, I think. So, absolutely.
When does the public? When could the public go on and get the new website?
Probably May, yeah.
May, maybe May. And also, is there, you have any plan for making the public aware that we've done this and that there is a new website, sort of inviting them in?
You know, there are two schools of thought. And the first says you just flip the switch and let it happen organically. Because you always want to make sure that you have some sort of a soft-launch period. And then there are other folks who issue a news release. In our case, I think, because there is a lot of desire to access the stuff that we have online, that we'll probably issue a media advisory and answer any questions and see what kind of coverage we can get. But I think the more effective way to roll out a website is through social media. I think that's where people will learn more about it, click right on, we can give them links directly. That's what the plan is for now, anyway.
That sounds great. And I know that the website serves a lot of different functions. So, one thing that, so you've really focused, I think, appropriately on the public's interaction with the website, and that's great. My sense is that the staff also relies pretty heavily on the website. So, and that's, I mean, you know, we have two hundred and some odd people here.
Correct.
So, being able to serve the internal needs that the website is intended for is also really important. So, can you talk a little bit about, I mean, I hear that there's going to be the beta testing, but how you're going to be involving staff and bringing in, you know, the concerns and the, you know, the capacities that they need the website to address in the design phase?
So, absolutely. Actually, in the design phase, one of the things they're going to do is that discovery process I mentioned. And that includes figuring out who are the regular users. For example, if the admins upload the board packets, everybody who needs access to that site, who touches that site, who has a role in content management, will be part of that conversation. So, that's an important facet.
Yeah.
But training is also really important. One of the things that I learned about our website is the content management system. I really, I really feel that we could have gotten improved training on that. Because if you post something, it's so easy to set parameters so that it goes away when it's no longer needed, or it stays up for as long as it's required to be there. And right now, on our website, everything just goes up and stays up in perpetuity.
Right.
We have old fisheries reports, all of these things. So, that's what makes the content migration process critical, right? We need to take a hard look at all of our content. That's a very good point.
Okay. Any other board comments on the other website?
So, I'm just not familiar with the ADA rules are and what our compliance efforts require.
So, there are several, there are several, and they're the real experts in it, right? But there are state requirements, there are federal requirements, but the most important requirement that we're really want to be careful with is those Website Accessibility Guideline requirements that we talked about. And MIG has an excellent record of making sure that compliance is there. There are three levels of compliance: single A, double A, and triple A. Generally, triple A is a bit excessive and onerous for most agencies, public or private. It requires really an extensive process to make sure everything is readable, audible. Most people fall in the double A, which is still a very good place to be. Part of that is making sure that any Adobe PDFs, for example, that we upload to the website can be readable using those audible readers. But there's a whole litany of things that go into compliance, and that's why it's best to let the experts guide us through that process. And there are also, there are also ways to make sure that we are compliant. They put overlays over the website, they run it through all kinds of tests, and they don't do it just when they build it, they do it periodically. So, with their help and with their support, six months from now, if they want to run a compliance test, they'll be able to do that and tell us. And sometimes, the smallest things can knock you out of compliance. If you look at our website, it has a billboard, a huge image on the top. If you put words in that image, it makes it really difficult for people with disabilities to access. So, there's a certain limitation of characters that you want to do or you want to have in any images. So, it's complex, but we're committed to making sure that it meets or exceeds those standards.
So, are we shooting for double A or triple A?
Really, right now, we're looking at double A. Triple A would be pretty extensive for us to maintain because, keep in mind, it's two pieces. They build the site, and then we have to maintain it. And most government sites are either single A or double A.
So, it sounds like as far as accessibility for visually impaired, there'd be some auditory function that would actually read PDFs?
Yeah, they, if you're visually impaired, you have that. But the key is that whatever documents you upload have to be able to be read by their readers.
Coated.
Right. So, that's what we're working on. Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
And then the other thing is, can you give us some examples of the work or agencies that MIG has done?
Sure, sure. Let me see, I have a whole list right here. So, some of their recent work, and part of the RFP was to make sure they gave us recent examples because technology changes. So, they've worked with Napa County Public Works Watershed and Conservation, and the URL for that is nappawatersheds.org. They've worked with the City of San Jose's Clean Energy folks, and the URL for that is They've worked with Contra Costa. Oh, I'm sorry.
URLs down.
All right. I'll slow down.
I assume you're just going to give this to us?
Sure.
In an email, so I'll just click on that.
I can do that.
Yeah.
And that way, you can just click on the link.
Okay.
So, Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority, recycle smart.org. They have a whole list, and I'm happy to share that in an email.
Okay, that would be great.
And that way, you can just go right on there because they're all different, right? And so, it's a good sampling.
And are they going to be doing the, is there going to be a redesign sort of of the look that they're going to do, or is that going to be handled by some, our own graphics people, or how is that going to be handled?
They do it all in conjunction with us. So, they'll work really closely with us to make sure that the look and feel is what we want. And part of ensuring that we have the right design, again, is getting in there and going through the process of using it. So, they're going to set up a site on the side, if you will, for us to look at and play with and make sure that it's something that we like.
And then the last thing is on the actual documents on the website. And the website, current website, I mean, obviously, it's the portal to everything, really. But it is, it's very hard to navigate, and it's like a lot of clicks to get to where you need to go.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just wondering, on documents, whether there's any thought about setting up sort of a library page where you could go by topic and look for documents, or if it's just going to be, you know, put your search in the search bar and go that way? Because that can be somewhat daunting to sort of focus on the nomenclature to get to where you want to go.
Right. You're exactly right. And so, in the RFP and for our website, there will be a document library that's organized in a fashion that the public can access. But one of the key features of that library will be a ramped-up search function. So, there are search tools that will search just by the name of the document sometimes. So, naming the document correctly is essential. Our search feature uses Apache. And what that means is it'll be able to go into the actual document, and if there are keywords that you're searching for, it can pull up that document even though the naming or the nomenclature may not be in your keyword. If it is a topic there, it will pull that up as well.
Right.
So, you'll have, you'll be able to see it.
That's tremendously helpful.
It is. I think that's a huge help, having played with our website.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this item? Great. Thank you. We, that just sounds great, and we'll look forward to the future updates on the website as it's evolving. That brings us to our third calendar item, which is the communications update overall.
Okay, great. So, in addition to the website, we're also doing an array of things to improve how we run our communications division. And so, that includes everything from looking at all of our outreach programs and all of our sponsorships to make sure they're in strategic alignment with our goals and our mission. But it also includes taking a look at some of our materials and some other things. So, this morning, I just wanted to go through a couple of those things for you with this quick PowerPoint. Let me see.
Can I just ask? I know that we're filming this session. Can the public see, how will this work? Will the slides now be appearing?
Yes. So, whenever we have a PowerPoint, the public sees the PowerPoint, not us.
Okay, great.
So, it's clear, they'll be able to read it and all that good stuff.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. So, a little bit about our outreach materials. We actually produce and distribute ninety-six unique pieces of collateral a year, and that's digital and printed collateral. And that has a reach of about three hundred and eighteen thousand people. So, the reach really speaks to your audience. And for us, that's important. And the reason I wanted to take the time to talk about our materials is it's really an opportunity to message. So, with all of these pieces going out, with the frequency added in, we have nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand impressions. And that means we have opportunities to tell our story, to get our message across. So, a little bit about what collateral is. You see right here, there's just a variety of things that we produce, everything from customer newsletters to bill inserts, to volunteer conservation and watershed program materials, and to construction notifications. And we think these are all important because these are the ways we communicate with our customers. So, what you see here is just a quick browse-through of some of the materials, some in printed format and some in digital format. So, I just wanted to give you a sense of what that collateral looks like. You've probably seen it, I know, but it's important just to have that context. So, some of the things that we're doing is really taking a hard look at the effectiveness of what we're putting out. And that includes looking at the frequency and maybe even looking at the format. For example, does everything need to have a printed format? Maybe. But maybe we can put a heavier emphasis on digital formats, which is the way a lot of people are going. We're also looking at ways to improve our messaging. There's a lot of inconsistencies there sometimes, so we need to get consistent, we need to make sure we're accurate so that people understand who we are and what we do. We're also looking at the design of our work and trying to really ramp that up, make it more professional, and make it more engaging so people actually read it and spend more time with the materials that we're putting out. And finally, and I think this is perhaps the most important piece, is we're really working on developing a stronger narrative that illuminates the importance and the complexity of what we do. We do more than just deliver water, and I think we need to spend some time making sure that that message comes across to the public. So, I was going to move into digital programs, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the materials.
Any Board questions?
I have none.
Okay. Any public questions? Not seeing any from the public. Okay.
Okay, great. So, digital programs, really, we see this as a huge opportunity for growth. And just taking a look at some of the data, I think we can see why. So, about seventy percent of Americans use social media to connect, to engage, to get information, to get news. Our accounts include Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, LinkedIn, and Nextdoor. And I think it's important to realize that all of these platforms have various strengths and audiences, and our goal is to maximize our messaging and target the correct audience so that we can be more successful in getting our messages across. So, Facebook and YouTube growth really outpaces other social media platforms. And I know, right? I found that interesting, too. So, here is a look at a chart from the Pew Research Center. And what it shows is really the percent of adults, US adults, and that's eighteen and older, who use at least one social media site. So, since two thousand and five, that was about five percent. And to February of twenty nineteen, that's about seventy, seventy-two percent. So, that's a significant number, and it's continuing to grow. So, Facebook and YouTube continue to be the most widely-used platforms. You can see the difference there. So, Facebook alone has sixty-nine percent, and that's the percent, again, of US adults who say they use these platforms. And YouTube, you see there, is seventy-three percent. And I find that interesting because I think I'm using YouTube more now myself, right? I mean, if there's a recipe I want or something, I'll tend to go to YouTube. So, I kind of thought that was really interesting. And then, right here, you see the other platforms: Instagram, Snapchat, probably the most popular there, and Twitter in at twenty-two percent. I'm sorry, twenty-two percent. That's correct. Any questions about that one?
Well, I guess I'm just interested in seeing where you go with this because I think the kinds of things that people are using YouTube for, I'm not sure they're going to go to see videos of the water district.
You've got it.
I mean, this is, so, let me just see where you're going with this.
You've got it. Although, video really does, really does raise engagement.
Right.
So, here's sort of where I'm going with that.
Okay.
So, here is a snapshot of our Facebook audience here. And so, you can see fifty-three percent women, and you can see right here the bulk of our followers. And that's thirty-five to fifty-four, predominantly women, you see right there. But, to me, the important part of this shows me the opportunity for growth, right? So, if I can bring in younger audiences here. And actually, even on this other end of the spectrum, in looking at the data by age, I found it interesting that sixty-five and older is growing. People are in Facebook.
What percentage of this is the total users?
This is all of our, this is our data.
People use, I never use Facebook.
He means people at the what?
Total.
Our service area.
Or whichever.
This is, this is our total Facebook.
I understand that. What I'm asking is what percentages is the total users of the webpage or the total customers? How representative is?
Right. Is this one percent of our customers? Is it twenty percent of our customers?
We've got thirteen hundred Facebook followers on the slide there.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the sample size.
Yeah. And I have no way of telling you. In fact, when we go to the snapshot, I have no way of telling you whether or not they're customers.
Oh, fair enough.
But what you see here.
We're assuming they are.
Very careful drawing conclusions about where opportunity is because if you don't know if this is representative of the population.
Sure.
You know, if you don't know, it's representative of the Facebook population, but what percentage of that is the real population?
Right. And this is actually even a smaller percentage, right? Because this is our Facebook population. So, if you look here, this is a snapshot of three months. And what you see is the number of followers are slowly starting to increase. And increase, the increase right here was interesting to me, and this was around the time of the PSP. And then you see, we were able to retain those followers and a slight uptick. So, here on the left, these are the top ten cities that our Facebook followers come from. And interestingly enough, and maybe to your point, San Francisco is on the top of the list there. And I'm thinking that what this tells us is these are not just customers, obviously, but these are people who may come to Facebook to learn more about our environmental mission, our stewardship, or our volunteer activities. So, that's why.
Watershed.
Right. The watershed.
Watershed as a recreational, my guess.
Exactly.
I don't think they're too interested in what we're doing about water here.
Exactly. So, that, I thought, was really interesting, the top ten cities. And here, what I just pulled was the top post from our Facebook account over the past three months. And interestingly enough, again, it was about the PSP shut off and some of the preparations that we made to get ready for that. So, if you look at this number here, people reached one thousand one hundred twenty-two. Doesn't seem like a much, I know. But on average, our reaches between one hundred and fifty to three hundred. So, this is significant in that we're seeing what kind of content people engage with, what kind of topics, and all that goes into building an effective social media strategy.
I mean, it's basically a crisis situation.
Yep, exactly. But you notice that we were able to retain those followers beyond that.
Right.
So, establishing ourselves as a source of information during a crisis like this is important, right? Because we want them to get their information from us, right?
I was just going to ask, on something like the PSPs, are we sending out that notice to our email list, too?
I don't know if we're sending it to our email list. Our focus has been mostly social media. But the important thing is when we do send this out, we share it with our partners, different cities, the City of San Rafael, the County of Marin, and they send it out. I don't know, aside from the county's email notifications, which we are a part of, if they get extensive messaging like this through the email system. A lot of people tend to go to Twitter, so we make sure we do a lot of Twitter postings, you know, just real-time.
Do we have an email list for folks that want to get our agendas and that type of notification?
Oh, sure. For yours.
And so, about how large a list is that?
So, there's a couple ways that people can get email notifications from us. There's a notify-me feature on the website, and they can sign up, and then they can choose which meetings they're interested in receiving alerts about. They can have red flag warnings, so they can pick and choose what they're interested in. And we also utilize Constant Contact where we have approaching fifteen thousand individual email contacts, but they subscribe to topic-based lists. And so, we could not take the entire Constant Contact email list and then send them a message about something that they have not subscribed to. It's that FCC rule. So, we could have weekly watering schedule.
Right.
Whether they're interested in that, or our volunteer program list is really heavy. So, we use both of those systems.
So, that was interesting because where I was headed is, for emergencies, is the email lists that we have an important additional way to reach customers. You're suggesting we couldn't use it in an emergency?
So, there's a, it's a little, it's a little more nuanced than that. So, during the emergency, we were able to reach out to large water customers to let them know about the irrigation. That's one piece. But in terms of just blanketing email, we can't. But what we can do, and this is something that Emma and I have talked about, is create a different email list by asking these people if they want to get district information from us. And strategically, we don't want to inundate them every week, but we want to make sure that they get maybe the latest information from the general manager's report, or just information in general, a little bit about the watershed, a little bit about some of our volunteer programs. But if they sign up for a general notification, by all means, we can reach out to them in times of emergencies.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can't use it for emergency notification? It just seems, you know, we're kind of hobbling ourselves.
Well, we could even ask a discreet question.
Yes.
General information in emergency.
Sure.
Information. Because I think that could be very big. It does feel like a good opportunity for us to think about.
Right.
Getting people to opt-in is usually not that hard. And I could be wrong about this, but in my experience with large-scale mailing, I think there are exceptions. I don't think the rule against using addresses that people have opted into for one purpose or another, I'm not sure it's quite that strict. I don't know, the rules may be different for governmental agencies than for nonprofits, but...
I would just say, on things like when we're shutting the watershed down and PSPs, I mean, that really will save folks a lot of hassle if we could just affirmatively touch them.
We totally agree. We totally agree. So that's something that we've already talked about. Sort of how do we marry all of these lists to see if we can have a really robust way to touch people via email?
How do they do, for example, it's not a burn day, a no burn day? I mean, they must, they blanket that, as near as I can tell, at least. It doesn't feel like they're waiting for an invitation to send that kind of an email out, or phone messages, actually, whatever, you know?
I don't think we do email.
You know, the other thing to consider, I don't know how many people here have opted in, but the sheriff and I have become super good friends. No, I'm kidding. But I mean, I don't know if you all are getting those notices. But we may, sometimes there are going to be some people, especially people who aren't fifty, really are communicating primarily by text. So it may be that we can send something out broadly, you know, through whatever channels we have and set up some sort of text that we wouldn't, that really would be for emergencies, right? That you're not going to do your general outreach, but just, you know, you know, an alert about a PSPS, or fire, or, you know, shutdown, or whatever it is.
Right. I love that idea, like the NICSIL system that we get. So for this last PSPS, we relied on the county messaging. And in a sense, that was great, right? So they didn't want to overload the circuits.
Exactly.
But there has been some conversation about how can we reach our customers directly for emergencies just like this. So I think Ben has started that conversation internally.
Oh, that's great. Because I did wind up getting calls. I don't know, maybe the other board members did too during the PSPS. We were getting notices constantly about that. And I had people just calling me, saying, does that mean we're going to lose our water? And so it just occurred to me that it would be useful to piggyback on that kind of thing. And it's not always going to be a PSPS. I mean, we may have, you know, we hope not, but in the event that we have our own emergencies, it seems, it's a very effective way of reaching a lot of people very inexpensively who aren't necessarily on their email.
Yeah, I completely agree. And people will go there first. I know that's where I get my alerts these days, right?
Exactly.
Point well taken. Thank you. Any other points on that? So just to sort of wrap up there, some of the, some of the improvements we're looking to make to our digital programs really involves strategically growing our audience and reach. We've set a goal for ourselves to triple that. Is that doable? Absolutely. Can we do better? Absolutely. And we're working on it. We're tailoring our messaging again to fit the platform and really improving our overall frequency and quality of messaging. In order for us to get followers, we have to have consistency in getting out there and letting people know who we are and what we do. Part of the way we do that is by creating regular content calendars. Cynthia, we talked about Hootsuite. All of that works in together when we have social media campaigns. So we're working on that. And I think you'll start to see some improvements pretty quickly. Finally, this last point, I think, is really important because social media is sort of, you know, a network of communities. And I think we really saw that with the recent PSPS. We had the help of the city of San Rafael, the county of Marin, other PIOs, Mill Valley. They were really instrumental in taking whatever it was we posted and sharing it with their constituents. So partnerships in social media, absolutely key. So if there are no other questions, Emma's going to talk about the Alpine Dam celebration.
Okay. Great. Good morning. So this summer, we spent some time planning and coordinating a month-long celebration of Alpine Dam's one-hundredth birthday and highlighting the iconic structure and just letting people know about how important it is in our water system and therefore raising awareness about what we do and our work on the watershed and the important part that we play in the county. So I wanted to share a couple of photos from the celebration. And we used this logo across all of our social media promotions and also had some printed postcards. And it was also put on all of our cakes. So we had kind of a branded celebration for the whole month of September. We also spent some time, I think Crystal put together an advisory committee with a couple of different people around the county to brainstorm some partnerships that would help to highlight Alpine Dam. So we had a large variety of partnerships and also events throughout the month. Everything from Marin County Bicycle Coalition, we had Pond Farm Brewing Company, West Point Inn, One Tam, we worked with the Marin County Free Library, and even some businesses like Book Passage. So we had cake cuttings, we had history talks with Jack, we had history walks with some of our rangers across the dams, book signings, a bike ride, trivia, a coloring contest with students in the service area. So we really felt like it was a great variety of events and a broad partnerships across the county. Here's one of our cake cuttings. We invited ourselves to a lot of different community events. This was at the San Iselmo Country Day Fair. So we had a booth set up, I think Sharice attended. So we had some trivia timeline about the Alpine Dam and its construction. You can see the postcards there in the corner. And of course, the cake with our Alpine Dam Centennial logo. There's a close-up. We also brought a cake to one of Jack's book signings at the Redwoods Retirement Community. And we had two sheet cakes, they were gone by the end of the evening, so it was a big hit.
Glad we can bring sugar to the cookie.
So this was something that we haven't done before, but we thought was a really great way to showcase a lot of the historical photos that we have in this building that people don't necessarily have the opportunity to see. We had a couple of pieces that we had on loan to the Antique Kent Room at the Marin County Free Library, so people could come and physically see the photos. And for people that could not make it into the exhibit, excuse me, we had a digital archive. So I think that Jack, you helped with some of the captions here and making sure that we identified the photos properly. So this is, on the left is just a highlight of some of the content that we shared. And then we worked with one of their librarians to make sure that it was easy to navigate and understand. So we were really proud to have all of our amazing historical photos and documents on display. And that was for the whole month of September. So available virtually and in the room.
Is it going to be on our website?
I don't know if we could host that on our website, but we definitely linked out to it and pushed them back to the Marin County website. Yeah, they were really, really great to look through. So we have this wonderful book written by Director Gibson. And you may have a secondary career, whether you like it or not after this. They were very well-attended, packed houses.
Really? Go, Jack!
We went to the Redwoods Retirement Community. That was about eighty, ninety people in the full auditorium. We were at Book Passage, this was at the very beginning, we had a lot more people come in. And then we also had the Mill Valley Historical Society host us at the Mill Valley Library. And that was almost eighty people, too. I actually did not end up with a seat, so hovered in the back. But book signings, it was great, really well-attended. And we brought complimentary copies of the book and then donated them to a couple of libraries, so they're in circulation. But this was great. And you can see that's Book Passage sharing the Marin Water hashtag and also the image of Jack's book. And those books were available for sale and benefited the watershed funds. So we kind of hit a whole bunch of different pieces through these events.
And fun to do.
Yeah, very much so. So for the month of September, Pond Farm Brewing Company, they had a hazy pale ale to celebrate the centennial. And they touted their use of Marin Water, the water actually in the brewing process. So that was fun. And we were shared all over their social media, too. So we did kind of a co-branding of our Alpine Dam Centennial logo and their logo, which was on their Facebook page. And it's just a new and different community partnership and reaching new audiences. Our One Tam partners, you've probably seen the roving ranger van around the watershed. We had it stationed at Alpine Dam. And anyone that came through, they did some Alpine Dam trivia, so that was fun. And our coloring contest, this was really fun for us to put on. We had two categories, kindergarten through third grade and the fourth grade through sixth grade. So we had first, second, and third place cash prizes for each of our categories, as well as a top class. And we thought, something that we hadn't done before, but was really fun for internal staff, was we actually set up this room with all the submissions and then had people go around and vote so that they could see the submissions and be involved in the process. So these were our two winners. That was really fun to do. There was a lot of different takes on who and what could be on the dam and in the water.
He added the fish, the one on.
Yeah, yeah. Just a month-long celebration and a new way to reach people and see the district in a different light.
Right. That's great.
Wanted to end on a video that we put together to, we put this out ahead of September to promote that we were going to be doing this celebration. So it was just a quick thirty-second video I'll share with you. And then I'm happy to answer questions.
Great.
Shot on a day when the waters are real.
Nicely done. I like the musical shift, very, very subtle. But really, really well done. Do you have a sense of how many views you've had for that?
Oh, I shouldn't have closed it. I could have told you. I think it was over a hundred.
Okay.
And we used MarinWater.org/ApinesOneHundred for all of the outreach. It was on the postcards and we would have the events listed there. So we pushed people back to our website and hoped that while they were visiting there, they would explore the website and learn more about us.
Great. Well, good, you know, congratulations on a campaign that seems to be well-executed. At some point, it would be great, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I love getting the analytics about, you know, how, you know, how these things actually do. I mean, it seems like a tremendous effort. And like you said, you had lots of people coming to Jack's events. But it'd be great to get a sense about how many people actually, you know, were touched, you know, sort of clicked on things and accessed things and showed up. So it'd be great to have at some point. Any further questions about the communications update? And then I think we're done. I just have one quick question that wasn't covered. I know we're in the process of trying to replace Ann. What's the status of that?
My apologies. I had planned to do this at the beginning of the meeting. I want to introduce Hawk and Chan. He's sitting right here. He is Ann's replacement.
Got it.
Hawk comes to us with more than fifteen years of experience in communications and marketing. He has extensive design experience and a lot of experience working with websites and backend. So he's going to be really a good addition to the team.
Oh, fantastic. Well, welcome. I didn't, I didn't realize that that's who you are. But we're delighted to have you here and glad that the team is at full, more or less full strength again. So that's great.
Yeah, until Emma goes on leave.
That's right. Congratulations. When is that happening, Emma?
February.
Okay. So we have a little time.
Right.
Although not very much.
I'll be up and, I'll be here up until the day.
I think it's a pretty long time. It's time of the, you know, this time of pregnancy, it takes a long time.
Seems to slow down toward the end. I don't know how.
Yeah, it's a weird time-space continuum thing. Okay, if there aren't any other comments, I think we are adjourned. Do I have to bang the gavel again?
Thank you.
All right. Have a good day, everybody. Thank you, you as well.